Welcome to tonight's regular meeting. Today is Monday, February 6th, 7:00. Regular town council meeting. This will also be seen on YouTube. Opening up the agenda will be the mayor, Marie Pisner, Councilor Pisner.
... God peace. We invite you to preside over this meeting. Even if we have different opinions, give us the unity of spirit. Help us to each listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals trying to promote our own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on a shared mission. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sheila, roll call, please.
Councilor Pisner?
Here.
Councilor Santinella?
Here.
Councilor Ungeyer?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sekala?
Here.
Mayor Crisati?
Here.
Councilor Despard?
Here.
Councilor Finger?
Here.
Councilor Hopkins is absent. Councilor Ludwig?
Here.
Councilor Mangini?
Here.
And Councilor Nelson?
Here.
Ten members are present, one is absent.
I would just like to mention that Councilor Hopkins is out of the country, and he is in Australia. He will not be with us tonight. Next fire evacuation announcement. In the event of a fire, there are exits in the back of the chambers, and to my left, the audience is right, exit through the doors, and go downstairs into the parking lot. Item number five, minutes of preceding meetings. First, do I have a motion to approve the minutes to the special meeting, January 23rd, 2023?
So moved.
So moved. We'll go with Councilor Nelson. And the second, Councilor Pisner. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, 10-0. Next, do I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for January 23rd, 2023?
So moved.
Councilor Nelson, and second by Councilor Ungeyer. Any discussion? All in favor by raise of hands? Unanimous, 10-0.
So moved.
All right, next. Item six, special guest tonight. I'd like to welcome John Borowski, who's here tonight to update us on the status of the Gray's Athletic Club since the fire. John? John? Welcome.
Welcome.
Come on up.
All right.
John, just make sure that the red button's turned on so we can hear you. Thank you.
First of all, I want to tell you guys a little about the Gray's AA Athletic Association. The Gray's Athletic Association is an infield institution founded in Thompsonville, Connecticut in 1924 as a special club and fraternal organization. We have been devoted throughout our history to charitable endeavors that support the infield community and those who make it better. We have a long legacy of sponsoring youth and adult athletic leagues, organizations dedicated to the less fortunate, the veterans groups, and those who serve us in our local police fire departments, among many others. As we are entering our 100th year, we are committed as ever to building this legacy. Okay, as we all know, on January 6th, we had a fire. It was a bad fire. And where we are right now, we still haven't got any reports back. We're still waiting on the fire marshal, the insurance adjuster. We've met with the town, we've met with the state. And until we get all the reports back, and it's a financial thing to decide what we're going to do, we would like to save this building. To do this, we're going to need everybody's help. The town, the state, the people in this town. If you've got a son, grandson, anybody that played sports in this town in the last 40 years, we sponsored you. And that's through high school, little league, girls softball, soccer, take a vet fishing, warming shelter, the food shelf. We've done a lot of this, and a lot of people don't realize what we've done through the years. And we're just looking for some help. We've got a website and a GoFundMe page, and we're looking to raise some money, and we're going to need some volunteers when we do this.
Thank you, John. First of all, we want to thank you and your club for everything that you do for the town of Enfield. Been involved with, not necessarily your club, but knowing all the teams that you've sponsored throughout the years, all these organizations, the warming center, the food shelf, the list just goes on and on. We will work with you. I know that we've met, we've talked, we've discussed, we will, you know, everybody that is out there, just to go on your GoFundMe page and start, you know, donating and helping out this group who really does so much for our community. I just want to say thank you for everything that you have done. It was a horrific scene, you know, seeing it that morning, totally gutted. It's heart-wrenching. And, you know, hopefully that building can be saved. But in the meantime, we have to find a place for you, and hopefully, soon.
That's one of our options we're looking into.
Okay, great. Well, we thank you for that. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Councilor Santinella?
Hi, John. Thank you. Can you tell us what the GoFundMe page is? What is it under so that people who want to contribute can find it?
The website is graysaa.com. And there's a link on the website that will bring you to the GoFundMe page. I believe Ellen's going to launch it tomorrow on the town stuff.
Yes, following the Gray's Club members being here tonight, we're going to focus on that, on the town manager's page. So it will be a shareable link so that everybody can share it out to all the organizations who would like to help.
Great, thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you, John. Greatly appreciate you coming and sharing this info with us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I know that we also have another guest, and I know it's under item nine, the civic clerk presentation. Are they? Are they? Oh, there they are.
They are virtually available, yes.
All right. So can I have a motion to move the civic clerk presentation up to the special guests?
So moved.
Is Councilor Nelson, and is second by Councilor Mangini. All in favor? Okay, unanimous? 10-0. Well, I want to welcome you, Rochelle Canturo and Maddie Hansel from Civic Plus.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to introduce them. It's Maddie Hansel and Stephen French tonight. Rochelle couldn't make it.
Oh, okay.
And this software is software that is Agenda and Minutes building software and approval that automates that process. It also, it works, it's integrated with our website. Meeting videos can also be hosted on this platform, and those videos can be bookmarked to the agenda, so it's easier for the residents and council people to move to that portion of the meeting. It also makes it easier for our residents and anyone else to do any research, because once we move all of our current minutes that are on our current website over to this platform, they all become keyword searchable, along with our town code as well. So I just wanted to introduce them. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, thank you very much. Well, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Stephen. I'll let you take it away so that I don't take up too much time here.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to share my screen with you to show you what we are talking about this evening. Can you confirm, Mr. Mayor, that you can see my screen? Thank you, sir. I thought instead of trying to explain it, I would show you instead two examples this evening of the software that you're being requested to purchase. The first example is what I want to share with you is what your residents would see when they went on your website regarding your meetings. This example is from our current provider, our current customer in Missouri. And I show you this, knowing that the general format of this page can be tweaked to fit not only your color preferences, but some layout issues as well. Visitors to your site will see both the upcoming meetings as well as the past meetings involving any of your boards and commissions. From this site, they will be able to download or view the agenda, the agenda packet, or the minutes, when the minutes are completed, as well as being able to, if this list was especially long, or they were looking for a specific board or committee, they could pare this list down, let's say, only looking for the audit committee. Visitors to your site can also search by using a keyword. So if they're looking for a specific purchase, let's say, or a rezoning, they could simply type in that, and they would get those related hits for that keyword. I want to pull up a recent council meeting of this particular client, and this would be very reflective of what your residents and visitors to your website would see. What we have here is a bookmarked view of an agenda. Each of these sections would be, obviously, sections that were found on your agenda, but would be followed by each of the action items within that meeting. For instance, residents could click on and view draft council minutes, seen here. They could click on and view other items such as staff reports or a draft ordinance. Your residents can also download or view both the PDF version that I just showed you as well as the plain text version. The plain text version is going to allow your residents, who utilize ADA accessibility devices, to incorporate this file directly into a hardware, a piece of hardware that they will use to either more and more adequately visually see the document, or can be inputted into a machine where it could read it to them. More importantly, your residents would also be able to see a recording of the meeting through your YouTube channel. Although this particular client utilizes Zoom, we can also incorporate that YouTube feed. And as your staff mentioned, we can incorporate bookmarks. So for example, a resident wants to only hear and listen to discussion that was held on bill number 649, they could click on that, and it would take them directly, directly to that specific part of the meeting. While they are viewing a recording of the meeting, residents at the same time can peruse your agenda and, again, pull up any of the attachments that were publicly made available and not seen as confidential according to any limitations that may be placed on by staff. Finally, in this example, residents can create subscriptions through our software. Subscriptions would obviously be free, but they could select one or all of notifications for each of your boards and commissions. In the example that I provided to you, this particular resident would be receiving an email for the city council anytime a new document for the city council was added to the agenda. So if there was a new agenda or a new agenda packet uploaded by staff, that resident would immediately receive an email with a link directing them to that particular file. Residents may also, with their subscription, share this particular meeting information via email with anyone they wish. Before I continue, Mr. Mayor, are there any questions from the council regarding what I've shown you so far?
Okay, does anybody have any questions at this point? No, I think we're good. Thank you.
All right. One more example, if I may, Mayor, is another client of ours, this one in Port Orange, Florida. They have the integration with our website as well as our municipal code or your codification services for your ordinances. If residents went to your website, they could type in a search term such as chickens. And I only picked this term because it is the most frequently searched-for term on municipal websites from our company. So a little viral information for the council there. When a resident came to your site and searched for the term chickens, they would first receive hits on the times the word chicken was mentioned on your website. So you can see in this particular example, there is a urban chicken permit application as well as notification of a chicken coop restaurant in Port Orange, Florida. But at the same time, we have search terms for the website. The resident can see all of the times the word chicken or chickens was referenced in your agendas and minutes for your council or any other board and commission. So without having to go to a different website or a different location on your website, residents can see the agendas, any attachments such as reports, resolutions, or minutes, as well as any agenda files that incorporate the word chicken. Finally, again, on the same search term, residents will be offered the opportunity to look at your municipal code or your codification, and all of the times the word chicken or foul or duck, anything comparable, is mentioned within that document. Clicking on this specific section of the code will bring your residents directly to that section where they can read, in this instance, all of the local regulations regarding the housing of urban chickens. So again, with one search term, residents to your site will be able to see results not only just on your website, but incorporating your agendas and minutes as well as your codification service. Mayor, I thank you for your time this evening. If there are any questions, Maddie and myself will be more than happy to address anything that you may have.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you for your presentation. I greatly appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions from the council? Councilor Pisner?
Okay, so I guess my question would be, is, would this take the place, then, of having somebody keep minutes at our meetings? And then minutes would just go here? Or we still have somebody taking minutes at meetings and having minutes handed out to us?
There is still going to need, you know, the need for someone to coordinate what is put into the minutes, because you can still put some commentary in there, and someone has to also put in the votes into the system so that they come over into the minutes. So I see that that position would still be a position.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Mangini?
Thank you for your presentation and your time. My question through our mayor to our town clerk, is this a tool that you would find to be valuable, this application?
I think it's a tool that I would find very valuable. I think the residents would find it very valuable. I think we hear a lot from residents that they have a difficulty navigating and finding information and finding where to find it, because I might have election information on my webpage, but if they don't know that it's on the town clerk's webpage, they could look all over throughout our website. So I think it would really help residents find information quickly. And also, I love the fact that the videos can be bookmarked to specific votes that follow the agenda. I think that would be extremely helpful for councilors and the residents.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ludwig?
Thank you for coming. And Town Clerk has presented, I think, three times to the General Governance Committee on this, and so, yeah, I think it's a great idea. Question to Stephen. What, so is there a section where we could house all our ordinances and it's easy to get to? Would this be part of it? Because that's one struggle, I think, actually trying to find where all our ordinances are within our town, for example, and an easy access. Can you kind of, the bookmark, like, on the meeting, but can you do that for ordinances as well?
I believe, Commissioner Ludwig, you have codification with the municipal code corporation, a company we recently purchased. So not just the individual cod, the individual ordinances, but is all of the codes combined into one document, kind of like a law book of the entire town to this point, is available to you on the internet? It's searchable, like I showed the example with Port Orange, Florida.
All right, thank you. And I think, you know, this is kind of a compromise. I mean, I think some of us, a little more old-school, I like to see the written word, even though I know you can go and look at a video, the videos can be altered. The written word, you know, the word for me is, so I think, I'll just speak for myself, yeah, I think it's a nice compromise that you brought to, again, still maintaining some of the, what I think is Enfield old-school way of doing it in writing, but also, hey, let's move a little bit forward into the, you know, the new way of doing things. So it's, I think, a fair compromise. I appreciate the company for being here. I appreciate you putting this together, because I think it's a good idea, and I will support it when it comes time to, you know, when we get to, you know, to the vote of supporting it. So thank you both for joining us here. It's been very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay. First of all, Sheila, thank you for bringing this to the attention to the governance and meeting with them in regard to this. I think it's a great valuable tool. There's one thing that we do hear from the residents often, is that our site is not user-friendly. If this is going to be user-friendly, and all this information that you did present in front of us today would be advantageous to us up here on the council, plus the residents who want to find things in regards to the meetings. And I do like the idea of bookmarking, you know, to the videos. It brings you right to that particular section of a meeting. So there's a lot of great points that were brought here. I myself am in favor of this new technology that would help us out. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other? Well, we thank you, and I'm sure we'll be in contact. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, well, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is item seven, public communications. Before we begin public communications, I'm going to remind everyone that, you know, once again, when you come up, you have to state your name, your address, you'll have five minutes to address the council. We really need everybody refraining from personal attacks or personnel matters. We're not, we do not respond during public comment period, but during the next couple of sections, if the councilors decide that they want to comment in regard to something that was said, that we can do that during either council communications or the town manager's report. I also want to take a minute to talk about our last meeting that we had, when we had residents come up here and publicly criticize a longstanding town employee and insinuate that there was a discipline issue, which was meted out in relation to this issue. Further investigation has shown that has not been the case. I'm reminding everyone out in the audience, once again, that this is not a forum to air grievances or discuss town employees. Not going to tolerate it. Not going to allow it. Now, if I have to say this at every one of our meetings, I will do that. So this is going to be a constant reminder for everybody. On another note, I will open up public communications. When you come up, state your name and address, and we'll move forward. We will entertain one hour at 7:25. Okay, is there anybody who would like to address the council? Lucian? Good evening.
Good evening. Lucian LaFave, 54 Kimberly Drive, also Commander American Legion Post 154. A lot of you know, we just had our 75th Annual Four Chaplains Mass yesterday at St. Pat's Church. I'd like to thank everybody who was in attendance for our 75th anniversary of that, and it's the 80th anniversary of the actual sinking of the USAT Dorchester. I'd also like to thank the town council members that were able to attend. I know you guys all have a busy schedule, and I appreciate the ones that did attend, and I'm sure a lot of you would have attended had you had more time. We were honored to have Representative Joe Courtney and his wife Audrey at our mass, and Colonel Budniak from the Polish, he's the Polish military attaché, that came up from Washington, DC. I just want to put out there, we can't let this story be forgotten. And the short story is, it was two Protestant ministers, Catholic priests, and a Jewish rabbi, the four chaplains that were on the USAT Dorchester. They gave up their lives to get others to safety. They gave up their life preservers to save others and went down with the ship. And, you know, gave comfort to the others that went down with the ship. And I just think it's a classic example of the American spirit and the American military's willingness to give their lives for others. And I'm just going to put out, next year's Four Chaplains Mass is going to be held on February 11th, 2024, at St. Pat's Church, and the public is invited, as well as the council members, and we invite the state representatives as well, and federal. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Lucian. Is there anybody else that would like to come in front of the council this evening? Mr. Young?
No wonder it was so quiet. George Young, 8 Holly Lane, Enfield, Connecticut. As many of you heard today, Governor Lamont is preparing the first cut to the state income tax in probably 30 years, as he said. As you may have heard, it could save the middle-class families up to $600 a year by lowering the rate on the adjusted gross income from 3% to 2% on the first $10,000 if you're single, or $20,000 if you're filing a joint return. Then the rate would drop from 5% to 4.5%, up to $50,000 if single, or $100,000 if filing jointly. Don't get too excited yet, because it is only a proposal and would not be effective until January 1st, 2024. So let's talk about what is now. And... until January 1, 2024. So let's talk about what is now, and how we may be able to save and benefit some taxes from our town real estate and vehicle taxes. This could be an evening where I don't have any complaints, so stay with me. I'll try not to put you to sleep. I'd like to get a jump start on the proposed budget. As in the past, I'm an advocate for the town to increase the exemptions for real estate and personal property taxes for seniors, the blind, or the disabled. The state of Connecticut allows more than the town is giving so far, so I hope that there is a strong council support to do this and keep it as it is or increase it. I also want to make sure that the cart, that certain senior homeowner tax credits are continued, even though the state does not reimburse us anymore. After all, the seniors do not have children in the schools, but we continue to pay for their education, which is fine. I want to talk about the difference between the assessment where the exemption versus the credit. There's been, there's a big difference, it's a little confusing to some people. If you have a $100,000 assessment on your house and you get a $3,000 exemption, that means you're taxed on $97,000. Whereas if you have a tax of $3,000, it works just like the federal, and you have a credit of $500, you pay $2,500 in taxes. There's a big difference between the exemption and the credit. The state of Connecticut homeowners program is for any taxpayer over 65 or disabled by the end of 2022 calendar year, and they lived in their home on October 1. You could be eligible for a tax credit, which could reduce your tax bill. There's income guidelines, and this year, many people, especially at home, don't realize it, but they've increased it for single people up to $40,300, and for married people up to $49,100. That's a little bit higher than it's been in the past, and people should really take a look at it this year. You have to present proof of income between February 1 and May 15. So now's the time to put your basket of eggs in order, and probably contact either Neighborhood Services, or if you need information, contact the assessor's office. For the totally disabled, there's a $1,000 exemption of the assessment for people who present proof of social security disability, or permanent, or temporary, or total disability. It's a one-time filing application, and you must present this social security award certificate. So if you want to read all about this, you have to go on the town website, but I think most people don't. So hopefully tonight, I encourage them to go there. Any individual who presents verification from the state or a physician that isn't considered to be legally blind may be eligible for a $3,000 exemption. So if you know someone, or if someone in your family is there, help them out. They may not know about this $3,000 exemption, and they're paying more on taxes than they should be. And you have, again, presented to the assessor. There's an additional exemption for the totally blind, for totally disabled and blind. If they've qualified under the program, the town can also give them an additional exemption. I'm not sure whether we have that, because I'm not personally familiar with it, but maybe someone here might know. Now, let's talk about the veterans who served at least 90 days in the time of war, were in honorable discharge. They can get, a veteran with a disability, he's can get a veteran's exemption of $3,000. You have to file with the town, though. Active duty veterans, many of them don't know this, but you can be entitled to an exemption, or the removal of the assessment on one of your motor vehicles during the year, if you were an active veteran, or if you were a member of the Connecticut National Guard as a reservist. So people need to take a look at that. Any veteran who does qualify, they could also get twice that. So I'm all set, I'm done. If you want to know about veterans exemption, if you're eligible, if you've been in the Spanish-American War, that goes back to 1898. So there's some after that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, George. Okay, anybody else that would like to come? Good evening.
Good evening. I think that's on. Is it on?
Yes.
Okay. Diane Stellmat, 18 Clear Street, Enfield. I've been here for several meetings 10 years ago, when it involved the Adult Day Care Center at Mark Twain. So haven't been here since. Met Mr. Santinella at my place of employment two months ago. He's just walking around, and I think he had lunch first, and then walked around. And we got to chatting, and I was just saying some good things about Enfield. I've been here all my life. I said, I think I'm going to come to a meeting because so many bad things are being said. And it gets awful. I watch them every week when they're on TV. Been trying to come, and I finally emailed him today, and I said, I'm coming. Not going to sit in my pajamas with my glass of wine, is what I do. So a few things I just want to say positive. I love the Enfield Express. I use it for everything. The senior repair program, thank the good Lord for them. My son thanks you because he lives in Boston, and when he comes, I have this long of a to-do list. They've taken care of it for me. Fixing a window, I've put all faucets in, my air conditioners, they fixed a step for me, and the list is starting for this year. Oh, I was going to say something about the senior blue book, but it's finally back out. I was looking for it for months, and I got one, so that's good. The AARP Tax Refund Return Program at the senior center, excellent. I've been, they've been doing my taxes for years. Thank you. Here's the interesting one. Watching one of your meetings through the summer about the car assessments. So be, I'll try anything. So I appealed mine. I got an 18-year-old car, and it went up in this assessment. I said, what? So I did the process, and Mr. Teacat, so I bumped into him in the library. He says, make sure you do this, this, and this, and you're covered. So I did this, this, and this. My original bill was $131. No big deal. I won the appeal, and I got $81.43 back on a $131 bill. I was like, this is Christmas. I mean, I didn't, I didn't get rich on the $81, but I, my mother always said, you can't fight City Hall. I looked at it, I went, I did it, I won. So that was great. And I do have just one, this has nothing to do with you, but maybe I can get a little help. My family's all put to rest at the Thompsonville Cemetery on Windsor Street. There's the entrance there, and they're the big, the big one, right there. Going in that gate, I have been scraping the bottom of my car. It is awful. So I called Public Works. They sent me to the Cemetery Association. It's their problem. Cemetery sent me back to Public Works, saying, we've been trying to get it in our budget, and we can't. So I tried going in another entrance. The entrance was fine, but the roads in that cemetery suck. And I visit monthly, so the bottom of my car that I got the appeal one on is probably not going to have a bottom too much longer. So that's my only complaint, and I'm glad I got you to laugh a little, because there's not too much laughing going on here. And John's been on me to get my butt here, so I'm here. That's it.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody? Come on. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
Well, we're here because of the Jimmy's Pub issue. It's helped everybody on the street except for the six houses at the top. Every weekend, we're calling the cops, almost in fights out there a few times. Two weeks ago, the guy's in my yard, about 2:30 in the morning, we have a Ring camera. We see him walk up by my boat. I don't know what he did, but we ended up calling the police the next morning. They came down, found out that he was from Newington. I don't know what he was doing up by my boat in the yard, but the camera didn't pick him up there. But the signs on the street, they're too high up, they should be farther down. And I hate to say it, but it should be residential parking only. This is just going on and on and on. The guy at Pizza Palace, he puts a sign up in the building, if you get a ticket, we'll pay it. And a $10 ticket, it doesn't stop anybody. So there's definitely a problem there.
And also, we've got pictures of Ruts, and I live next to him.
Yeah, right across my front yard.
In the front yard, because they're just pulling right out over the, you know, front of the yards, going around. There's a children's playing sign there. They just go right over the front yard. We actually just purchased the Ring camera. The first night is when the incident happened, that we caught them going up by his boat area. And, you know, and you can hear them yelling, woo-hoo, ha-ha, as clear as day on the camera. So it's, and I don't, be me, but Pizza Palace, Jimmy's Pub, the owner knows about this, because he's been out there at every instance. When we're calling the cops, he comes out there. It's his DJ that's parking in the front of their house, and...
Yeah, he just doesn't care. I mean, people park there, and they pay the $10 ticket, or I don't know, probably throw them away.
I know we were up till 4:30 in the morning a couple of weekends ago, because of the people coming out and having the conversations. And then that was one of the instances where, you know, we got up, the cops were called, and we filed a report. They're just, yeah, it's no, no consideration. I've got no trespassing signs, because the police department said, put no trespassing signs up there. Then if somebody comes on to the property, we can have them arrested. But we live in a residential, and it's, it's not a bad neighborhood, and I got to put no trespassing signs on my yard. You know, it's just...
Saturday night, somebody, one of the residents over there at Pizza Palace, came out, ran into the car in the parking lot across the street at the package store, gave them the name and stuff, and then took off. But I guess the police came down, and I don't know if they gave him a DUI, but from what I understand, he was pretty wasted, the guy that did it. So it is a problem. I mean, you people don't understand, you don't live there, but take a ride over there some Saturday night. And we call the cops, we go to bed at, say, 12 o'clock, and then there's another group that comes in after those people leave and parks on the street, and...
Calling the police, and it's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
And you get sick of calling the cops.
Yeah, and they're coming down, you know, they're coming down, they're taking in the cars, and then it's over. And then, again, 12 o'clock, when all the other bars are closing, they're coming in here, they're coming out at 2 o'clock in the morning. I can hear the music. I am diagonal from Pizza Palace. I can hear the music inside my house. My dogs are going crazy when they're coming out, because they're having conversations, and, you know, it's just, yeah. And I've got pictures, it's all inside Pizza Palace, it's on the internet. You get a ticket, give it to us, and we'll pay it. So he is not trying to work with us at all. It's the same thing. And like I said, it's his cars, his daughters parking in front of their house, his DJ's parking. The guy came out, was like, give me a ticket, I don't care. Those are his exact words. And that's when the cops were involved, you know, we called the cops, got them involved, and, but that's the mentality that's coming out at 2:30 in the morning, and, you know, and we should, my husband works, he doesn't have a Monday through Friday job. He's got to get up the next morning, you know, 7 o'clock in the morning, be in the work. Should not have to be dealing with this stuff on a weekend night, you know? It just, yeah. So we're begging, please, residential only, and raise the tickets, because the $10 tickets, they're not working. It's a joke. It's a joke to all of them.
My wife's got a folder, probably an inch thick, documenting everything that goes on over there. Time's up?
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, very, very, very good hearing. Thank you. All right, is there anybody else that would like to come in front of the council? Is there anybody else? Okay, I declare public communications over. All right, next, council communications. I'm going to start off tonight. There's a couple of things that I'm going to be focusing on with my comments. We're going to kick off with Black History Month, first of all. I'm going to just very quickly just mention about the death of Tyree Nichols and the town's new diversity committee. First of all, we had a very successful first meeting. I really feel good about the, the energy that was in the room with the DEI committee. The next meeting is scheduled for February 27. We'll be electing a chair and a vice chair. Also, later on in tonight's agenda, under unfinished business, we're still working on the draft. We're actually going to be tabling that item, so that it'll be ready for the public hearing for a special meeting before that. So just stay tuned for that. What I have in front of me right now is a proclamation honoring February as Black History Month. And it states, whereas February is known for celebrating Black History Month, and the legacy of Black Americans whose, whose power to lead, to overcome, and to expand the meaning and practice of American democracy has helped the United States become a more fair and just society. And whereas, this country was established upon the profound but simple idea that all people are created equal and should be treated equally throughout their lives, and now therefore, this year, on what would have been Dr. King's 94th birthday, we honor the work of Black Americans who have created a more fair and inclusive democracy, helping Enfield recognize the strength of all the members of the community through the work of all the elected officials, our town staff, the Board of Education, and our newly organized Diversity Committee, on behalf of myself, Bob Crisati, Mayor of Enfield, February 6, 2023. What we're going to be doing here is that we're going to be supplying copies to the various departments who are doing related activities that can be, so this can also be displayed. It's important that all the members of our community feel acknowledged as part of the community, and that we, as elected officials, understand the various races and cultures that are, we're representing. The recent partnership between Ujima and the Historical Society is an example of this. Now, one thing that I do want to mention, on February 11, at the Enfield Public Library, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., the Ujima African-American Group will be having a fundraiser. They'll be accepting donations, and they'll have various things on display at the, at the library. Also, if you have an opportunity to go into the Enfield Museum on Enfield Street, and go in and see the exhibit that was put up there a few weeks ago. Also, the group has extended their thanks. They were awarded a $5,000 grant. So, you know, and once again, we're supporting this group, their continued support to the group. They greatly appreciate everything that's been going on. And I know in June, once again, they'll have their second annual Juneteenth celebration, looking forward. But if we have the opportunity this Saturday to go out and support the group, that would be, that would be really nice if we did that. Also, when we work together and have these kinds of conversations, we build relationships, and we hope that through these efforts, that horrific events like the murder of Tyree Nichols is not going to happen here in Enfield. Our hearts break for the family and friends of Tyree Nichols, and we continue to pray for an end to the senseless acts of violence that plague our country. And I know in Enfield, we are making great strides, and we will continue to do that through... And I know in Enfield, we are making great strides and we will continue to do that throughout these upcoming years, moving forward. That was my report kicking off Black History Month. And as the, the month goes on, I know that in our schools, there'll be a lot of activities that will be going on and then other activities with the Ujima Group. So stay tuned throughout the upcoming weeks. I just wanna mention that last Friday, and this isn't with Black History Month, this is in regards to myself, Tina LeBlanc, who's the head of the chairperson for the Board of Ed, and our town manager, Ellen Zappusessa, who, we testified on the State of Connecticut Public Hearing on Act HB 5003. And that's the Act Concerning Education Funding in Connecticut. We testified with a, a letter that was sent and it was read. And hopefully, you know, we, we see some progress with this grant. It would definitely help us out. And so I just did, I did wanna mention that also. So thank you. I'll open it up. Councilor Pisner?
Good evening. I just wanna say thank you, Diane. I love when residents come up here and tell me how wonderful our town is. And I am on the Commission on Aging, and so when I go this Wednesday to the meeting, I will definitely let the volunteers know because they really do a bang-up job. And, and I mean, they're not young men. They, they're, they're older gents and I'm gonna tell you...
They're climbing a ladder.
I know. And, and I'm, I'm blown away by it. So I will definitely let them know. Because I, I say it all the time, what a great group of, of people they are.
I send a card every year.
Yeah, they're wonderful. I also wanna do a reminder out there to all the parents that are listening today, the EFRC, they are going to be offering some classes for grades two through five. They have a great pottery class. I know my granddaughter took part in the art program and loved it. So they have a pottery class that's gonna be starting as well as basketball signups. So please contact EFRC. And also, summer camp registrations will start on the 22nd, or the 21st of February. So by all means, it's a great program, helps the youth in the town. So if anybody's listening out there and they need that, please contact them. And I too, I did go to the Four Chaplains Mass. It's at my church, I go every year. It's probably one of the most moving masses that somebody can go to. And I'm always proud of St. Pat's and its choir because we go really special, all out. And it was, it was a wonderful mass. And thank you, Lucian, for always sponsoring that. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Finger?
Thank you, Mayor. Lucian, you forgot to mention about the cook. You forgot to mention about the cook. That'd be a nice one if you're still around. Through the town, through, through the mayor, through the town manager, residents contact me about some work being done at 151 Abbey Road. It is the Jarmok property there. They're adding a lot of dirt and soil there. I talked to quite a few residents over there. I'm getting mixed, mixed issues with them, some saying, hey, their pumps are always running. You know, there's some pumps and some say it's caused by the pond that's back there. I don't have the qualifications to determine what's right, what's wrong with that, if you can find out for me. So I may can get back to my, to the people there in District 3 for that. That'd be fantastic. Because again, I just not getting any, anywhere with it. And, and that's it. And again, I had a great time at the service too. It was the first time I was in church, and I won't lie, since 2004 my mom passed. So it was, it was kinda difficult to walk in, but it was, it was heartwarming and I want, and I wanna thank you and all, and all your wife and everybody else who worked that day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Maajini?
Thank you. Just a great big thank you from Boy Scout Troop 108 to our mayor, Bob, for presenting a proclamation last Sunday for an Eagle, LaShawn Robinson. It truly meant a lot to the troop and to LaShawn and his family for you taking the time to come and speak on that. I had planned on the Four Chaplains Mass and unfortunately, fortunately, conflicts to occur, we had Scout Sunday yesterday. And that included Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, Brownies. And it, it was a very nice ceremony, you know, with a court of honor to follow, over at the Hazardville United Methodist Church. They will be celebrating 103 years of partnering with the Scouts. And for the past 85 years, they've opened the doors to the troop. And the mission of that church is to work within the community, to relate and nurture and help develop good character in our young people. So I just wanted to say a few words about Scout Sunday. It was very uplifting and, you know, I'm happy I attended. I just wish I could've gone to Four Chaplains too, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Ungary?
Good evening. This past week, they had a topping off ceremony over on Hazard Avenue. There's gonna be a new Trinity, part of Trinity Health of New England, the new Presley and Helen Blake Ambulatory Center. They have a really nice ceremony. We all had an opportunity to sign the beam with the Christmas tree and the, the beam goes up and the unfurling of the American flag. It was really nice. And the, the good thing about that for Enfield is that the residents, many times for treatment, they have to go to Hartford to get certain things, and now they'll be able to go to Enfield. So that's something we're looking forward to opening. I also wanted to thank Lucian for his invite to the Four Chaplains Mass. I really, really enjoyed it and I was happy to be there. It was just a beautiful tribute and it's nice that we remember our veterans. And a, a special thanks goes out to Mr. Crizell for loaning his wonderful voice in the choir. And the acoustics in that church are phenomenal. If you've never heard Walter Crizell sing, it's, it's really a treat. It just, it makes the whole thing. Couple times, it brought tears to my eyes. So thank you, Walter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Santinella?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Diane, thank you for finally coming. Just a little backstory, I was shopping, Diane approached me, she said, hey, aren't you on the town council? I said, what did I do? And she said, no, I have positive things to say. I said, you better get into the council chambers and tell us what's going good. So thank you very much. You, you, I'm, I'm in Costco more than I have any right to be, but thank you. It's always a pleasure to see you. So thank you very much for that and thank you for making your comments lighthearted because the other comments I have are lighthearted as well. This weekend, I had frozen pipes and was hunkered under a blanket and was longing for summer and barbecue. And there is, wanted to mention to people that on April 1st, there is going to be a Steak Championship Cook-Off that is gonna happen at the Mount Carmel. Registrations are starting now. You could go to steakcookoffs.com and register. The top prize for the best cooked steak is $1,200. So anyone with any culinary talent who's interested, we can start thinking about the nice weather and what's coming and outdoor barbecues. The other thing that I had is if you support our police department and if you're a pet lover, I, I have a deal for you. There is a wonderful grant that is available. It's a $15,000 grant to support our canine officers. And if you don't know Duncan, this is Duncan on the screen and his handler. And the, the process is to go to hometownheroes.org and vote for Duncan as your favorite canine officer. You can go on every single day and vote for him. And the, the canine officer with the most votes at the end, the $15,000 grant will come here to Enfield. So I've been voting every day. If you haven't, it goes on all month. And just some perspective of the cost of maintaining these canines, there is, currently we do support our canine officers. There's an annual stipend that's given to the officers. We subsidize food, we subsidize vet bills, we subsidize equipment for the canine officers. But if we were to get this grant money, it would offset some of the taxpayer expense and just a real feel-good thing for us to do as a community to try to help a dog. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Desberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for that proclamation. I think it's, it's really important that we're recognizing Black History Month. In that spirit, I wanted to plug that the Enfield UCC, in collaboration with the Opera House Players, will be putting on a Black History Month concert. This will happen on February 15th at 7:00 p.m., sort of marking the midpoint of Black History Month and showcasing the talents of entertainers, performing music that has arisen from African-American traditions. So it'll be a lot of spirituals, gospel, jazz, blues, R&B, things like that. Donations will be received during the concert for Opera House Players as they continue their renovations necessary to move into their new home at 100 High Street. And then, the mayor mentioned this a little bit, but the work that Ujima is doing with the Enfield Historical Society is really exciting to me. I heard, you know, as a kid, many rumors about how Route 5 was part of the Underground Railroad. And, you know, living next to, well, I grew up on Spear Ave, right by Paul Robeson's house. And so if they can uncover this, this sort of history, I mean, I feel really excited about that and I think we should all stay tuned there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any, Councilor Nelson?
Just real quick. Just real quick, through the mayor to Councilmember Santinella, I'm not interested in cooking, but I am interested in judging because then I get to eat the food. So can you give me information on that? That's all I have. Thank you.
I have no comment for you.
Thank you, Councilor Santinella, for not coming. I was gonna make one, but I'm not going to. All right. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Scola, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Very quickly, I was able to attend the opening and ribbon cutting of the new Health Trax second location in Skidco. I know a couple of us were there. Really beautiful facility, it's in the Skidco Plaza. So if you are a member of Health Trax, I believe you can attend and go to both if you have their multi-use or multi-building pass. But a very, very pretty building inside. Thank you for the proclamation, Mayor. I think that was a wonderful way to start off the meeting. And thank you to the people who came out and spoke, specifically the Francis Ave people. Just so you know, parking fine amounts is something actually one of our subcommittees is working on right now. So hopefully, we will have some more information on parking fine amounts soon. So that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Councilor Pisner, and then we're gonna move on.
Okay. Mayor to the town manager, the Public Safety Complex Building Committee, are we, a, a couple of people have reached out to me that put applications in and they haven't heard anything. So I would just, I'm just asking to see where we're at with that.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to the town manager report. Ellen, thank you.
Okay, we have several issues. The first is actually a lead-in from Councilor Pisner's question. The bond commission for our public safety complex dollars and everything else that was planned for the agenda in January, that meeting was canceled. So until we have the written documentation from OPM that the grant through the public safety complex bond has been authorized, I'm not comfortable putting a building committee together. So we're just gonna take a conservative approach on that. And once the money is delivered, we will, we will do that. But as you noted, there is a drop-down, there is an opportunity to apply. So if anybody is interested in serving, they should definitely do so. The mayor mentioned that we are doing some testimony in Hartford. We did the, the school education funding, we're also looking at some housing legislation. And today, we submitted for the mandates that are being discussed for summer camps, which would put a real burden on municipalities. We're also reviewing best practices, which is another issue because we have to form a fair rent commission before July 1st. That is a mandate that came down. And while Enfield has enjoyed having one in the past, it is currently not in, not live, so to speak. And so we're gonna take an opportunity to look at what the legislation is now suggesting and recalibrate that. We had some good news this week with our NIAC accreditation at the Enfield Child Development Center. They have received accreditation through June 1st, 2028. So that is a really very high-level accreditation and it's one that requires a lot of work. So that was a bit of good news to bring to the council. We also have a meeting tomorrow with our department heads where we're gonna start talking about the budget outline and what our expectations are. So the assistant town manager, the finance director, and some people involved with the capital improvement budget have been meeting in small groups. We're gonna be setting up that tentative schedule that we will hopefully get to you at your next meeting so you can see how this is gonna roll out. But really through March, it'll be mostly internal, fine-tuning the document that you will eventually receive and deliberate. So we'll have that scheduled to you for the, in advance of the March meeting. Through that timeline and especially through the capital improvement, I know that there's been discussions on the Board of Ed side, there's been discussion in our CIP meetings, there's discussion because there's so much of this infrastructure money coming through. I do think I agree with the superintendent that it is time to focus in on Enfield's elementary schools and see what that looks like for the next generation of students. So that will probably be a topic that you'll be seeing and hearing about during our budget process. We have two of our projects through CROG for their Loat SIP funding. So again, all of these different pieces of funding, and this is why we felt so strongly about positioning Enfield to have an on-call grant writer. We actually have two now. They're still in technical phases, they're doing some work for us, but until the spring grant session opens, we're probably not gonna see a lot of actual hard copy applications. So just so you know, there's usually a very large spring grant session and then there's a fall grant session, and that's what we're gearing up for. The other piece of the budget that was mentioned earlier by Mr. Young is our Senior Tax Relief Committee. That is meeting on Wednesday. And I believe that they will be reviewing almost draft final document. We do need to get that to you for your review and for hopefully your adoption in early March because we do have that window of application that will be open. What the Senior Tax Relief Committee is looking at is piggybacking on what is already established here. And you heard Mr. Young go through a lot of those programs. But we have found, especially with inflation, is that there's another segment of especially our senior citizens who are still on fixed incomes, but all of their other costs are increasing. So we've gone up and we've included another layer of income eligibility that currently is not included. In addition to that, they're also looking at a senior volunteer tax credit. So if there is a senior who volunteers in the community, they would be eligible for an additional tax credit. Those two proposals are gonna be integral to the budget planning process because you'll have to put money aside, just like you do for the pilot programs that we get and the circuit breaker programs from the state. And as he mentioned, he's correct, we do not get reimbursed for that. And Enfield has been making those programs whole for years. So that will be a new piece of the budget deliberation as well. The deputy mayor talked about us increasing fees through general government, that is in play. And I do also think, you know, we're gonna end on a business note. We, we did hear some really nice things about Enfield businesses tonight. And this past very cold weekend, I did receive an email from Monica Wright at Safe Harbor where they had 25 people staying with them over the course of the weekend. And they did stay open for the Arctic blast that came through. And she wanted me to note that they received donations from Red Robin, The Country Diner, Danny's Pizza, all provided hot meals. Enfield Food Shelf provided some staples and Lives and Fishes came over with some sandwiches. But to the point that we've also been making about how difficult it is to attract and retain employees, one of the disappointments over the weekend that we just found out about on Monday was that the Magic Carpet buses had to stop running due to lack of staffing. And that is a critical element within our social safety net. And it's just one small example of the struggles that our assistant town manager and HR director is going through. So I did wanna highlight that. Lot of good successes, a lot of generous businesses, but again, from a public policy standpoint, we do have some challenges there. And the big news is our neighbor right across the street, Gary Rome, has received, if you look at the board, a very large honor that I wanted to mention tonight. He has been named the 2023 National Time Magazine Dealer of the Year. He has been named the 2023 National Time Magazine Dealer of the Year for both his Enfield business and his one in Holyoke. So, what a tribute to him, and I know that he too is a very generous member of our business community. So, I wanted everyone to see that, because that was breaking news earlier today from the festivities that he attended over the weekend. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for those updates. Well-informed. Okay, item number 10, the report of special committees of the council. I believe we do have one. I am going to bring this to Counselor Santinella, and, yep. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to read a statement regarding the independent, the status of the independent review of the tax review. On August 29, 2022, the town council authorized an independent review of various issues arising from our property revaluation in 2021. The council also agreed to appoint three members of, three members, Counselor Ludwig, Hopkins, and myself, to serve as managers of the review process. Over the last several months, the three of us have met with Attorney Coppola, both in person and by phone, to get updates, discuss process, present questions, and guard the integrity of the review overall. Attorney Coppola has, to date, reviewed over 7,000 documents, reviewed audio and video of council meetings, meetings of the Board of Assessment Appeals, conducted staff interviews, and utilized the resources at his disposal to ensure that this has been both a thorough and fair review. At this point, there are a few more interviews which still need to take place, including interviews with members of the Board of Assessment Appeals. There is also the potential for additional document requests and a potential need for additional follow-up interviews to be scheduled. That said, barring any unforeseen developments, we expect to see a draft of Attorney Coppola's report at the end of this month, with a final report due to the council by the first half of March 2023. The three of us want to state explicitly for the record that all requests made to Attorney Coppola have been addressed, and that we have worked in unison over these last several months to ensure this review has been conducted with the highest level of professionalism, without bias or partisanship, and with the focus being solely on the best interest of Enfield taxpayers. The review is not done yet, and there are important steps left. However, we are certain that the final report will present an accurate and comprehensive set of answers to the questions originally asked by the council. At the conclusion of the review, we expect all materials reviewed by Attorney Coppola to be made available to the public. And I read this statement on behalf of Counselor Ludwig, Counselor Hopkins, and myself. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Santinella. Appreciate that. Counselor Mangini.
Fourth of July committee did meet last night for their monthly February meeting, and they are going to have their dinner dance, and I know it's going to be in March. I believe it's March 4th. I can verify the date. But they're moving right along quickly, yeah, to make this, you know, again, another memorable and happy event. We lost a couple of years, you know, due to COVID, so they're trying to catch up and get back on track, and everyone in our community enjoys and supports the efforts of the group. So, just want to bring that forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Sicola.
Thank you. I actually have two. One is from the JFK Building Committee. We are in the middle of designing the concession stand that is going to be in the back in the Fields area. The PNZ application has been submitted. They are also discussing designing a canopy over the delivery doors for the trucks, for those workers who accept the deliveries of the food. Basically, they're just, they're down to the last few punch items, punch list items, which is wonderful. Every wing has been turned over, and the building is substantially complete. So, good news on that front. Also, general government did meet, I think actually twice in the last three weeks, because we had a pretty large agenda of items to go through. The civic clerk that we had seen did go through general government, and we thought it was appropriate to bring here. So, we do hope that when that comes for council consideration, that it is positive. Our town clerk brought that to us as what she thought would be a useful tool for both the residents and the town employees. Also, as indicated before, we are working through parking fine comparisons, and also the massage therapy ordinance, alcohol sale ordinance on Sundays, food truck ordinance. And I think we have one item on the agenda regarding an ambulance that has gone through general government and sort of gotten our blessing as well. So, busy month for general government, and I think we don't meet again until March.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any other reports? I just, very quickly, just going to mention, on Wednesday, the Senior Tax Relief Committee is meeting. Town manager Ellen Zappusasou did mention really an important aspect of, of this committee is voluntary tax credit, and, and then also targeting other areas, income limits, really looking to finalize up all the guidelines and get that, so that we can incorporate that into our budget. So, keep your eyes and ears open for this. All right, it's going to be very important. Thank you. Item number 11, unfinished business. We have one item for the unfinished business, and unfortunately, it's still unfinished. And I'm going to be asking the council to allow for a special meeting before the public hearing next Monday, so that we're able to finalize the DEI draft before their next meeting. So, could I have a motion to postpone the vote or until Monday, February 13?
Motion.
Okay, that's Counselor Pisner, and a second, Counselor Mangini. All in favor? Unanimous, 10-0. Okay, very good. All right, moving right along. All right, under new business on the consent agenda, we have items one and two, we have two items. I'd like to take a moment to give additional detail on the Family Resource Center donation. The donation of $4,000 is coming from the proceeds of the annual meatball golf tournament that was organized by Patrick Talarida and designated for summer camp scholarships, and the women's club acts as the treasurer. We appreciate everything that he does. It's a yearly event, and I know that the women's club helps out with this, and this is also helps with the grandparents raising grandchildren. So, we have the two items, and then the other one was town manager entered into agreement for the emergency management performance grant. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Counselor Nelson, and a second by Counselor Mangini. All in favor? Unanimous, 10-0 in favor. Under appointments, town council appointed, there are none. The next two items are related to the purchase of a used ambulance to get us through the supply chain and get back the order situation that we're currently in. I'd like to acknowledge the hard work of Chief Aaron Rigott, who's in attendance tonight, and our finance director, John Wilcox. John, John's back there. Okay, I just want, and the Fleet Division, who did the inspection of the vehicle. I believe this also received the backing of general government also. So, thank you, everyone, for your hard work in regards to this. We're going to go to item C, request for a transfer of funds for emergency medical services. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from EMS fund expenses, salaries, part-time $20,000, health medical insurance $15,000, professional development $3,000 to the EMS fund expenses, other equipment of $38,000. Date prepared by, date prepared January 31, 2023, prepared by Aaron Rigott, Chief EMS.
Second.
Counselor, Deputy Mayor Mangini, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Sicola. Okay, and a second by Counselor Nelson. Any discussion on this? Sheila Rolco.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sicola?
Four.
Mayor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nelson?
Four.
Ten in favor, none against.
Item D, discussion resolution, the transfer of funds and a waiver of bid requirements for the purchase of used ambulance for the EMS services, $170,000. The resolution is as follows. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from the general fund revenues, appropriated fund balance $170,000 to general fund, non-departmental charges, transfers to EMS of $170,000. From EMS fund revenues, transfer from general fund $170,000 to the EMS fund expenses, vehicles, $170,000. Be it further resolved that the town council does hereby find, based on the foregoing compelling public interest, in accordance with the Town Charter, Chapter 5, Section 8D, that is therefore against the best interest of the town to solicit bids for the purchase of a used ambulance, date prepared January 31, 2023, prepared by Aaron Rigott, Chief EMS Services.
So moved.
Counselor Nelson, and a second by Counselor Mangini. Any discussion on this? Okay, go ahead.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Since we have Chief Rigott here, can she just come up? Because this was, I know general government knows about it.
Sure.
Just if we could have her, just a very quick thumbnail sketch of where we're getting this ambulance, why it's a good deal, and the fact that DPW has already blessed it. That would be great.
Yes, thank you.
So, there, and you've heard this theme before. There's a national shortage of vehicles, so there's a national shortage of ambulances being produced. We need an eighth ambulance. Our call volume has increased. We normally would do this through the budget cycle, but we know that it's two to three years out to order a new ambulance. Used ambulance dealers are also not very common. There is one in Eastford, Connecticut, luckily. There is some in upstate New York. There's one in New Jersey. There's one in Pennsylvania. But their inventory is limited, because it takes so long to get a new ambulance. So, we went and visited Eastford. They had a 2015 ambulance in very good condition with 68,000 miles on it, which is really nothing in the ambulance business. It comes with a two-year bumper-to-bumper warranty. They will do all of the maintenance on it. Outside of oil changes, they come and pick up the truck and service it. It has been fully vetted by Fleet. It has been looked at, test-driven up on the leaf, the lift at Fleet, and they were pleased with the condition of the truck. This is out the door, ready to go, $170,000, which seems like a lot, but new ambulances are greater than $320,000 at this point. So, this includes stretchers, radios, graphics, everything we need. Any other questions?
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Counselor, Deputy Mayor Sicola.
Just thank you very much. I know that, you know, when you're faced with this kind of situation, we also appreciate the out-of-the-box thinking that you did in order to try to get yourself an ambulance, and it seemed like it worked out.
Thanks. Yeah, I never anticipated finding a used ambulance. We would never have gone down that road three years, three years ago, but here we are.
Well, thank you very much. I want to thank yourself, once again, John Wilcox, and the Fleet Division for making this possible and making sure that we have a good deal here. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Sheila Rolco.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sicola?
Four.
Mayor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
And Counselor Nelson?
Four.
Ten in favor and none against.
Item E, discussion resolution, the resolution to accept open space pursuant to the 2005 resubdivision of the property known as 229 Post Office Road. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby accept the open space as proposed from the resubdivision approved in 2005 in accordance with the above recommendation. Reference PH 2505, resubdivision of 229 Post Office Road, MAP 68, Lot 151. Edward E. Wogner, applicant, owner, date prepared January 26, 2023, prepared by Lori Whitten, Director of Planning.
So moved.
Counselor Mangini, and a second by Counselor Santinella. Any discussion on this? Counselor Nelson.
I was involved in this back in 2005, and the council decided not to take this land. We were dealing with serious escarpment issues at the end of Sun Street and Play Street that was costing the town millions and millions of dollars to stabilize. And this, if you read the description from the town, it is escarpments and wetlands. And I would ask that we pull the minutes up from those meetings, and I would like our engineering department to go walk this property and see if it is stable, and what exactly are we going to be taking before we just jump in and take this piece of land? Because obviously, it's not a buildable piece of land or even worth anything, and that's why they're willing to give it away. I know we have a drainage easement, but we have the drainage easement. I mean, why do we need to go farther than that, especially if they're eroding escarpments, which I don't know if they are? But I believe that's why we didn't take them in 2005. Planning and zoning agreed, but the council did not, and that's why it didn't go any farther.
Town manager?
Thank you.
Yes, I'm trying to find it in my sent emails, but I do believe that based on the request of several members, we did have engineering and planning put together a little summary sheet for you as to why they have deemed that this property is valuable to them as it relates to the maintenance of that drainage piece. So, I'm going to try to find it in case some of you didn't receive it. There were a bunch of attachments to it.
No, we got it.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I think that we are hoping that you will act on it based on the recommendation of our professional staff.
It just says, it says that it makes it easier to work on the drainage, although it is escarpments and wetlands. So, I mean, the drainage is brand-new. We just did JFK, and it's escarpments and wetlands. It doesn't say to what extent. It doesn't say if they're stabilized. So, I mean, I, I'll take a walk out there myself and look at it through JFK and see if it's stabilized. If it's a stabilized escarpment, I don't have a problem with us, you know? But after the millions we spent, and it was a different time then, and, you know, we still have all of the Scannick River escarpments and stuff, they got to be addressed at some point, because we're going to start losing neighborhoods like we did before. And to assume something that may need work, I just think we should look at it first.
Well, based on the information that was given to us, you know, and staff making the recommendation that we should, you know, accept, accept this, you know, I am, I'm good with this. You know, if it's going to make it, you know, have better access to maintain the storm drainage pipeline behind that current easement area, I'm in favor of moving forward with Any other discussion on this? Okay, Sheila Rolco.
Counselor Pisner?
Against.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer?
Against.
Deputy Mayor Sicola?
Four.
Mayor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Against.
Counselor Ludwig?
Against.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
And Counselor Nelson?
Against.
Against, that's one, two. That's five members against, five members four and five against. No abstentions.
Motion, motion fails.
Can we reconsider that? Because if we walk it, and I will re-
Well, well-
That's why I didn't want to push a vote.
Well, at this point-
Don't assume that, Matt, because before it hasn't.
Well, we'll move on, we'll discuss that-
Okay.
-in terms of re-looking at this. All right, Item F, Discussion Resolution, premium pay for the Enfield firefighters, which is a revision. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer hereby is made from COVID-19 Fund, COVID-19 Service Pay miscellaneous $77,000 to the Revenue Grants COVID Federal $77,000, date prepared February 6, 2023, prepared by the Town Manager Ellen Zappu Sasso and Assistant Town Manager Steve Belinda.
So moved. So moved.
Counselor Santinella and Deputy Mayor Sacala. Any discussion on this? Rolco.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sacala?
Four.
Mayor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nelson?
Four.
Ten in favor, none against.
Item G, the resolution to temporarily waive the CDL qualification of the current part-time transportation dispatcher day backup driver job description in the Transportation Division. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 2 of the Town Charter, the Enfield Town Council does hereby temporarily waive the CDL requirement for six months in the part-time transportation dispatcher day backup driver job description.
So moved.
Deputy Mayor Sacala, and a second by Counselor Mangini. Any discussion on this? Sheila Rolco.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sacala?
Four.
Mayor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nelson?
Four.
Ten members in favor, none against.
Okay, Item H, this is the resolution setting a public hearing concerning the potential lease of a portion of Brainerd Park as required per CGS 7-163E for March 6, 2023. This is the next step in the process for the Brainerd Park discussion. Now that planning and zoning has returned, an affirmative vote from the Section 8-24 referral we sent them last month. So be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby schedule a public hearing regarding the conveyance of a portion of Brainerd Park at 133 Brainerd Road to be held March 6, 2023, to begin at 6:30 p.m. in the council chambers of the Enfield Town Hall, which is located at 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut 06082, in order to receive public comment. Date prepared February 1, 2023, prepared by Ellen Zappu Sasso, the Town Manager.
So moved.
Counselor Mangini, and a second by Counselor Despard. Any discussion on this? Sheila Rolco.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sacala?
Four.
Mayor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
And Counselor Nelson has left the room, so nine in favor, none against.
Mr. Nelson in the House?
No.
Okay, I'm sure he'll be back. Okay. Item I, Discussion Resolution, the resolution setting a public hearing regarding the proposed repeal of the vicious dogs ordinance, Sections 10-51 through 10-56, inclusive for March 6, 2023. Whereas on September 9, 2002, the Enfield Town Council enacted the vicious dogs ordinance Town Code Sections 10-51 through 10-56 inclusive, and whereas the council wishes to consider repealing the ordinance, and whereas the council wishes to seek input from the public on the proposed repeal of the vicious dogs ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved that the council hereby schedules a public hearing regarding the proposed repeal of the vicious dogs ordinance Town Code Sections 10-51 through 10-56 inclusive, to be held on March 6, 2023, at 6:20 p.m. in the Enfield Town Hall, Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, in order to receive public comment. Date prepared January 24, 2023, prepared by the Town Attorney's Office.
So moved.
Second. Counselor Mangini, and a second by Counselor Nelson. Any discussion on this? Counselor Ludwig.
Just through the mayor to the town manager, is it possible to have, make sure you have a copy of the ordinance that we're appealing and the general statute that you provided, which, again, I appreciate, made it 22, 22-358? Because, again, if we're going to follow state law, I just want to be clear, what we told those residents, we were following state law, and yet we couldn't do nothing about it. So I want to make sure that they have a copy of both, or at least a link where they can go to the general statute, that'd be great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sheila Rolco.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sacala?
Four.
Mayor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
And Counselor Nelson?
Four.
Ten in favor, none against.
Item J, Discussion Resolution, resolution to opt out of the 2015 Kohl's Business Personal Property Tax Settlement. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the Town Manager to opt out of the 2015 settlement agreement with Kohl's Corporation as allowed under the agreement. Date prepared February 1, 2023, prepared by Johnny Wilcox, Director of Finance.
So moved.
Counselor Mangini, and a second by Counselor Despard. Any questions on this, any discussion? Sheila Rolco.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sacala?
Four.
Mayor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
And Counselor Nelson?
Four.
Ten in favor, none against.
Item K, the resolution to pass the salary of the Assistant Assessor position. Recommendation, which we've already discussed, be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 2 of the Town Charter, the Enfield Town Council does hereby adopt the wage adjustment up to $75,000 for the current Assistant Assessor position and advertise the salary range of $65,000 to $75,000 for the vacant Assistant Assessor position. Date submitted February 6, 2023, submitted by Steve Belinda, Assistant Town Manager. Deputy Mayor Sacala, and a second by Counselor Nelson. Any discussion on this? Counselor Nelson.
Due to the investigation, ongoing investigation, we have not reappointed one of the BAA members, and at this point, I don't think it's right that we make changes in the Assessors Department until we get the outcome of this, because there may be changes in that department. So I would ask that we table this item until we get the results back from the investigation
Counselor Mangini?
I disagree. I believe that we have enough information and also direction from our staff to move forward, and we need to do the right thing and not wait for some event that may not happen. Thank you.
Counselor Santinella? Okay, all right. All right, there's a motion on the table-
Second.
-to table this item. A second by Counselor Finger. All in favor? Against?
To table?
All in favor?
No.
Against, okay, so eight in favor, two against, okay. Item K will be tabled. Item L, Discussion Resolution to Raise the Salary of the Assistant Recreation Manager Position. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 2 of the Town Charter of the Enfield Town Council does hereby adopt the wage adjustment to allow the town to advertise the salary range of $53,899 up to $65,899 for the vacant Assistant Recreation Manager position. Date submitted February 6, 2023, submitted by Steve Belinda, Assistant Town Manager.
So moved.
Counselor Nelson, and a second by Counselor Mangini. Any discussion on this one? Yes. Counselor Pisner?
I think we're approaching budget. This is an item that I think needs to wait. I think it's a large increase, and it's going to affect budget, so I'm not going to support it tonight.
Okay, thank you. Rolco, please.
Counselor Pisner?
Against.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer?
Against.
Deputy Mayor Sacala?
Four.
Mayor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Against.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
And Counselor Nelson?
Four.
That's seven in favor, sorry, yeah, seven in favor, three against, no abstentions.
Okay, thank you. Item M, Discussion Resolution, Request to Discuss Reversion and/or Deposition of Nathan Hale School. Now that the Board of Ed has acted, the Town Manager will be approaching the state about the remaining money owed. So be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council authorize the Town Manager to pursue the waiver forgiveness of funds remaining on the amortization repayment schedule in order to pursue a reuse of Nathan Hale School at 5 Taylor Road.
So moved.
Counselor Nelson, and a second by Counselor Mangini. Any discussion on this? Counselor Ludwig.
Through the mayor, just want to be clear, so they voted to return it to us, let's just say you don't get the waiver. The state does not grant it, and we want to, again, I agree we want to pursue redeveloping the property, but then that roughly $200,000 now becomes our issue, and so I guess I got a semantics here, since we don't have a resolution, accepting the board's vote, which I don't, I'm not in favor of doing, but I'm in favor of allowing you to pursue the waiver. I want to be clear what I'm voting on. I'm not accepting the board's vote, but I'm certainly willing to give you the chance to negotiate a waiver. So I want to be clear, does this resolution not, I don't want to accept their recommendation, but I do want to give you a chance, or staff, to see if we can, as you mean semantics here, by saying I agree that allow you to negotiate with the state, does this say we accept the board's vote? Just want to be clear, it doesn't say in the resolution, so I don't think it does. However, just want to be clear.
So the resolution specifies that I'm allowed to go to the state and start the conversation. However, that action was predicated on the action of the Board of Ed from last week or the week before. It is not spelled out here, but what we are trying to do is create a chain of custody and show people the steps that we're taking. The next step that could actually have run conducive with this tonight, but I chose not to do it, was to also refer this for Section 8-24, because eventually the Planning and Zoning Commission will have to also weigh in on the disposal of a school, which is now in our control. I'm trying to separate it out and take it step by step so that it's clear to the public. So, you know, from a semantics standpoint, I can say yes or no to your question.
I appreciate the way you answered, I get it, but semantics is important to me, so I may be in the minority on this, so appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Nelson.
Through the mayor to the town manager, I all along have said, if we, if this building's coming with a price tag of $200,000, I'm not interested. Again, following Councilman Ludwig, absolutely, if you can go about getting this waived, I stand behind it 100%, but I will not accept this building with a price tag on it. So, to be clear, like he said, I will vote to allow you to pursue it, and if anybody can pull it off, you can, but if we can't, I do not want this building on the town side. Thank you.
Counselor Despard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to see this building sit vacant any longer, and so I am fully in support of this, and I really hope you can get that waiver, Ellen, I think you can. Thanks.
Is there any other discussion? Sheila Rolco.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sacala?
Four.
Mayor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Against.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nelson?
Four.
That's nine in favor, one against, no abstentions.
Okay, there is nothing under Item 13. Item 14, Public Communication, any person wishing to come before the council, you will have three minutes. Please be respectful, is anybody who wants to come in front of the council?
Lucian LaFave, 54 Kennedy Drive, also Post Commander, American Legion, Post 154. As Counselor Finger brought it to my attention, in the Ford Chaplains thing, there was another unsung hero there, and this fits in with Black History Month. Charles W. David was a black sailor on the U.S. Coast Guard Carter Comanche, which pulled a lot of the survivors out of the frigid Atlantic waters that night. And being black, he was only allowed to be a cook, because segregation was still around at that time. He volunteered to go out and help the other sailors pulling the survivors. His commander fell overboard, he dove into the frigid Atlantic waters, pulled his commander back up on deck, another sailor went over, he went in and pulled him up also. And altogether, there was about 100 survivors that they brought up onto the Comanche. About a month later, Charles W. David Jr. died of pneumonia. He was posthumously awarded the Navy and Marine Corps Medal for that action, and I just think this fits in with the Black History Month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to come in front of the council? Walter.
No. I only do that on Sundays. Walter J. Cruzel, 21 Charlie Road. Now that we know the date of next year is February 11th, was it? Maybe we can coincide with the Boy Scouts to get them more involved, too. I know, I know years ago, we did have them, but it was over at St. Albans years ago, we did, they were a big show. My bird's eye view from upstairs, I take my little counter, and it was 159 people in attendance. I'd like to see it get to 200 next year if possible. It's a very, it's informative, it should be talked about at the Board of Ed as well. When I was on, I did. It's, like you said, it's a story that we have to keep telling, it cannot be forgotten, so. And it's, I think we're the only one that does this in the whole country, to believe it or not, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come in front of the council? I declare public communications over. Are there any final counselor comments for tonight? Counselor Pisner?
I just want to remind everyone that Monday, the 13th, at 6 o'clock at JFK, there will be the public hearing for the POCD. I am encouraging all residents to take a look at that document and to come and voice their opinion, pros and cons for it, but I think it's an important document that needs to be looked at, and we'll be all there listening to you, so we'll see you then.
Okay, thank you very much. One final comment. Thank you to everybody that participated, and thank you to everybody up here on the dais tonight. Job well done. Second. And all in favor? Unanimous. Have a good evening. Have a good evening.